So Cindy, I have 2:00 PM. If you could start the recording and then we could get on with our meeting. And once it's up and recording, then we can go.
You're good to go.
Great, thank you. All right, Council and members of the public, but also those who are going to present today. Thank you for being here. I'd like to start this committee of the whole meeting for April 15th, 2021, by calling it to order and with the adoption of the agenda. Sir, Counselor, that would make that motion, please. Counselor Charlotte, seconded by Counselor Elliott, thank you.
Actually, your worship, I think on the original agenda, there was supposed to be an in-camera session.
Yeah, there won't be because our, our, our CAO couldn't be with us, so we're not going to have that in camera. So she will, she will bring that forward at another meeting.
There were some personnel or hiring issues that were supposed to be discussed. Are they proceeding without our sort of input or review on that matter?
I, I have no idea, but because she's not available, so that's the reason we're not having the in-camera. Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Just further to Counselor Elliott, I, I think it's appropriate to have that in-camera meeting, even if it's just to do another tabling, but there is instruction from, from Council to have that today. So I think it's appropriate that we have that added to the agenda.
Okay, so if one of you want to add that to the agenda, and then we will table that at the end of the meeting to the next, next council meeting. So someone want to add that?
Sure, sure, your worship, I'd like to add.
Okay, okay, Counselor Elliott and seconded by Counselor Palmer. So we're going to adopt the agenda as amended. So if someone want to put that motion forward for me, please. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Charlotte, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for March 11th. Does somebody want to move that for me, please? Counselor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Elliott, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Any business arising for those, from those Committee of the Whole minutes of March 11th. Seeing none, we're going to move on. I have no announcements today. We have a delegation and a presentation from Okanagan Regional Library. Jeremy Sunden is going to lead that, and so I'll, I'll let Jeremy and our staff member, Jaleen, kind of control what's going on here. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you for, I'll just, I'll just, I'll continue on. So my, my name is Jeremy Sunden, and I'm from the Okanagan Regional Library. And I can't see our slides yet up on the screen, so I'm.
Hi, I'm bringing them up for you momentarily.
Okay, so this is an update on the Revelstoke, the Tech Lab and the Reading Room project that has been in the works for some time now, and this is an update for Revelstoke Council on that. As I mentioned, my name is Jeremy Sunden, and I'm the CFO at Okanagan Regional Library. I also look after the, the facilities and the leases for the library. With us today as well is Lucy, Lucy Bergeron, and she is your local branch leader there in Revelstoke. We also have Dawn Middleton, our CEO is with us, and Monica Gauthier, she's the Director of Public Services, and also involved in the project, and I see an attendance with us as well is Vicky Topping, and she is from MQM Architects, who's also been involved since early on in the project. So that's actually, if we can go to the next slide, please. So that's, that's most of this slide. I, I, there's an introduction paragraph there that you've probably already had the opportunity to read, but this is a partnership, and it's with the Columbia Basin Trust, who has contributed significant funding, and also the city of Revelstoke, who has both contributed funding and is, well, providing the space outside of their building for this new addition. So we're really excited about it. There's a little bit about the timeline there. It's, it's been in the works for a while, as you're probably aware, and the new service, like existing services with the library, this will be a service enhancement, and it will be free for your residents to use and to learn with. If we can, please go to the next slide. And on this slide, I'm going to actually hand it off to Lucy, and she's going to have some comments for you about these. So Lucy, when you're ready, if you can unmute, and I will mute.
Hi.
Hello, Lucy.
Okay, hello, sorry. So I have other staff in the building, so I may have to put my mask back on. Hopefully you can still hear me. Actually, I'm going to ask now, can you hear me? Because our technology's been funny today. Good? Okay, great. Okay, so you've had a presentation from me before, and I told you how shy and introverted I am. So anyways, bear with me, I'm really nervous, but I am very passionate about this, and I'm surprised that you've given me the chance to talk about it again, because I'm pretty much unstoppable once I get going. So I'm just going to, I just, what we're talking about here, Jeremy just introduced it, is the lab and Reading Room Edition. So as far as the lab goes, what we're getting is really quite astonishing. And so, you know, we can talk about the technology quite a bit. There, there's going to be a digitization station, so you know, you'll have the ability to, you know, convert your old albums or tapes or your DVDs, sorry, you know, videotapes to a digital format. That's a lot of fun for our seniors, who, you know, want to preserve their, their past and, you know, share it with family. And it's also, I think you get really good transferable skills in file management when you use that kind of technology. And, you know, it's quite a complex process. So and we'll also be getting a Whisper Room, which is a great place where you can record music, but one or two musicians at a time can record musician, music. And, you know, podcasting has really become a thing during, during COVID, and I, you know, I, I can, I can see it being used quite a bit for that. We're also going to have the full Adobe Creative Suite, so that's very expensive software, and lots of people expressing interest in that. A bunch of other stuff, it, you know, like a cricket machine, and then just a bunch of technology for the kids to explore coding and circuitry robotics with. And we've already been doing that, we, and we continue to do it even through the pandemic in a take-and-make kind of format. And it, I, I guess what I, I'm, I guess I'm getting really nervous again, but I just, I just want to say how important digital literacy is, and that I, I see it every day in this place, that people are lacking in digital literacy, and it is creating barriers for them. So this seems like, oh, it's just a whole bunch of fun, and fun is great, don't get me wrong, but there's, the intent behind it is to support digital literacy in our community, which is really, especially during the pandemic. What I've seen in terms of barriers to people and what we've been doing to try and help people, you know, the lab is going to help us. The lab is going to have a laptop cart for a start, so we'll be able to do some direct teaching and address the, the gaps proactively. And then we're also, there, there's also going to be, sorry, I don't have my notes here. So maybe what I'm going to do is move away from that, because I'm getting a little bit too passionate. So one thing I just want to talk about in terms of the addition and the changes to the library is the amount of work that the library does to support the tourism infrastructure here in Revelstoke. So we are, on any given day, you know, most of our computers are in use in this branch, and I have the capacity to look at other branches, and we are very busy compared to other branches, even the big ones. So what's happening is, first of all, you know, in the before times, we would have lots of visitors here doing research, but right now, we have had, we, all the people who come here to work, come here to print their resumes, to look for places to live, to, to conduct their business, to conduct their, you know, to deal with the government websites. And we support people doing that and literally deal with people in tears on the immigration website all the time. So, you know, the, and the other thing is, when the road is closed, this place is full of people, as many as we can get in now. Before, it was just, it was crazy, and there was people asleep on the floor in here. So, and you know, we do what we can to make them comfortable. Having more space would really help with that, and I think, you know, I think making the space a little more in line with the kind of civic pride that we see around Revelstoke, and more in line with the Revelstoke branding, I think that would be a really valuable thing. We, as I say, we're, we, we see a lot of visitors. We're on the route. People go down to the river to go for walks, and that reading room is just, just going to be amazing for, for visitors, because they'll be looking at Mount Bigby, Mount McPherson, the river, beautiful spot, and it'll be quiet. We did get a Google review one time, and this is sort of funny and embarrassing, but the guy said, "Well, this place would be a lot better if they didn't have a daycare in it." And so they had been visiting when we were running Storytime, and the place was overrun with children, which we love, but obviously he didn't. So, and the other piece of that is all the exams that we proctor here. I, I'm not even kidding. Sometimes people are on our computers writing exams, and toddlers wander up and ask them what they're doing, or crawl into their laps, you know, because it's a friendly kind of place. So, so again, just, just wanting to point out what we, what we do for supporting tourism infrastructure, and that, yes, we have a lot of tourists in here, and we, we love having all the tourists in here, but it's just good to be aware of, of just how many people come here. So I'm going to move on to the children, tweens and teens. So there's been a lot of discussion in Revelstoke about a teen space, that there isn't a good indoor teen space, not everybody's into outdoor activities. And with the changes that could come into the branch with this, this addition and the lab, we're seeing lots of opportunities to bring teens in here. They do come. We'd like to make a special place for them with their own dedicated computers, and as well, the lab, I think, will be a huge attraction, because we're going to have an Oculus virtual reality headset, so that's, I mean, I'm excited about that. So super fun for them, and just like pretty wholesome and safe environment for them to be in. And also just, you know, then we can act as contact points for them, which I think is pretty important with teens and tweens. It's happening still a little bit, less than it was, but people will use us as, as a daycare service. Now, they're not supposed to, but it's more like an after-school service, so kids come in of a certain age, and they'll spend half an hour before their lesson in the library. Again, you know, we just have a lot of incidental traffic in here, and we just like to make the space better, and also the experience of being in here better for the kids. So rather than just having them be kind of purposeless, they'll be able to use the lab and entertain themselves and learn at the same time. And so the, the last piece on here is the partnerships and community engagement. So we did a little bit of sampling to make sure that people are still into this project, and they really are. And so our partners really stepped up, and we have a lot of plans for the space, and we partner with, you know, I, I could, I could bore you and list off a whole bunch of things, but of course, like the youth liaison is very excited about the lab space, and we have been working on projects together. We're working with some other, am I running out of time? We're, we're working with some other partners as well on, on all kinds of things to support digital literacy. So, and, and getting more funding all the time for these sorts of things. So Jeremy, I see you're visible. Do you want me to stop now?
Well, it's not that I want you to stop, but we, we are trying to commit to a certain timeframe. So we can try to just back me if you're about ready.
I'm going to, I'm going to end with a story. I'm going to try and make it a quick story. So last night, I reconnected to a family that I've been connected to for years. I did, I, I've worked in the past as a volunteer in adult literacy support, and so I worked with this fellow for quite a few years and trying to, he was super dyslexic. He had pretty low literacy, but he had identified that he wanted to run his own business, but he recognized that he couldn't because he didn't have the skills. He wanted, he wanted to use technology to support him. And if I had had the lab back then, I could have helped him more. As a tutor, it was pretty hard. So now his wife is coming in, she's injured, they can't retire because they don't have enough money. They're working these jobs that don't pay very much. She's trying to get her high school degree so she can do a job that isn't going to destroy her body, because the job that she's doing now is destroying her body. And so I sat with her for an hour and a half last night and taught her how to use Word, so she could write a paper, so she could, she could finish her high school degree. So these are the people that we want to help. These are the people that can really benefit from the lab. And I'm getting teary, so that's enough of me. So thank you for listening. Sorry, I ran on and was so nervous.
Thanks, Lucy. You did fantastic, very genuine, very authentic, and it all came through wonderfully. If we could go on to the next slide, please. So I won't, I won't read you this quote, because you've probably read it already, and if not, you are while I'm speaking. "We received a, a lot of public supports," and when I say "we," I mean, people are connecting with Lucy and providing this to her, and she's flowing it through to us. "Your community is, they've been wonderful. They've been quite patient. Lots of requests for updates, that's for sure, and lots of, and lots of support." And so this, it was actually hard just to pick one, because I didn't want to load up a slide with, with a whole bunch of supportive quotes. But that, that's one that I thought worked really well. If we could go on to the next slide, please. This slide is just showcasing some of the media attention that we've been getting over the time for the project. If we can go on to the next slide. That continues there. I would have liked to have been part of the burger challenge. That looks really good, and I've just had lunch, but I could still give that a try. The next slide, please. And so here you can see the URL set up a dedicated web address there, reblab.ca, selling t-shirts and advertising the project, so that has went well. Next slide, please. So here's, here's a little bit of timeline. I won't read all those points, because I, I did commit to trying to move this along as quickly as possible. And so you can, I, I'm happy that, that you'll see these, this timeline, you'll have this information. I guess picking up here is that we, we received the grant in March of 2019, so we're two years in so far. If we could go to the next slide, please. So then on, on this slide, just continuing through the timeline, giving you some of the high-level milestones that were achieved as we, as we proceeded through the months. Next slide, please. So the tender, the tender came back, the tender responses in October of 2020 in our first attempt. And as you can see, the costs that came back were 50 to 93% over the cost estimates that we, that we obtained from the professional. And we thought the cost estimates themselves were even high, so when the tenders came back 50 to 93% over that, it was, it was a tough pill to swallow. It was, it was a bit discouraging, because we weren't sure how the project could proceed forward, or if it would, or if there we were seeing the end. And, and we weren't going to be able to carry out this fantastic project in Revelstoke. And then the idea was, was hatched, well, is there, is there a way to do this with modulators that could still achieve what we want, but be a much more affordable approach? And that is the direction that we've been proceeding since late October and in November. We talked to the city about perhaps allowing ORL to take on that direct relationship with the architect, MQN, and that's how we've been proceeding. And so we're, we're hopeful again. It was a, it was a low point, but, but we're back and we're optimistic, and we'll go on to the next slide. And so this just takes us to the present, to our meeting today. You can see we, there's the two-year anniversary in mid-March. And we'll go on to the next slide, please. So here's the schedule that we're, we're hoping we can stick relatively close to, because you can see it still has ORL moving into the space in August, which is fairly late in the year. And I will admit, we have not yet submitted that building permit package, which you can see is the March 31st date, which, which we've passed, but we'll try to make up for that between now and, and August. But this is the timeline that we're trying to work with, we're trying to stick to. If we can go on to the next slide, please. All right, so the next few are probably the slides that, that the committee is most interested in. Next slide, please. So here you can see the existing space on the left, and the new space identified as New Reading Room on the right. And I suspect there'll be questions, so I'll, I'll just keep, there's not many slides left, so I'll finish, we'll finish these, and then the committee's welcome to ask the questions. Next slide, please. So there it is, again, showing the new addition, you know, in the, in the center there, attaching to the existing building on the left. And the next slide, please. I really enjoyed this one. When I first looked at that, I didn't even spot the, I didn't spot the addition, because it just looked so natural there, that, and I, I'm not in Revelstoke too often, that I, I was very impressed, but, but there you can see, it's got a similar form and character to the building beside it in the, the colorized section at the top, and then otherwise, it's just a pretty simple building, you know, of gray, grayscale, and big windows. So that'll be the reading room, and Lucy's got all sorts of things planned for in there. And the next slide, please. So the project had quite an extensive, or extended timeline, excuse me, due to a number of considerations. We kind of hit a bit of a stumble with the cost on our initial approach, but we're back on, on track to success, I think. The project remains viable with this modular construction option. And we think that the rendering looks really good. We hope you'll agree, and we hope that you'll be excited to see this come to fruition with us. And thank you again for being a partner in it. Revelstoke has, did make a commitment, and, you know, that's, that's really helpful. And it's certainly part of what is helping, or a big part of what's helping to see this project through. So thank you very much. I will mute. We do have MQN here for technical questions, and then there's the rest of us that are also available. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate the, the presentation, the input, and, and to see this moving forward. So at this point, from the Okanagan Regional Library's perspective, this is a done deal. This is moving forward. This is not speculation. Is that correct?
So, so long as there's no surprises in the costs that come back when we re-tender the project, yeah, we, we think it's highly likely that the project will, will succeed in the way that you're seeing it right now.
Okay, and when, when this is done, this is a modular building that be put up against our building. When it's done, it's going to look and last as long as if it was originally constructed, as far as settling that sort of thing. Everything will be taken into consideration to make sure that it's there, in a, in a positive way.
Vicky, did you, did you want to have any comments on that? I mean, I, I just have the rendering to look at the same as the others.
Yeah, and so noting that it is on a concrete foundation, that it will have less settlement. Certainly, when the contractors do come to site, they will make sure that the, the preliminary ground soils are compressed enough that it's going to remain, hopefully. The, the risk involved is very minimal. Certainly, as soon as we're able to form the foundations, the actual modulators will come on site, and they'll be there, right? And you will be able to see that there is a built form within a day, because it is only two modulators. And then they will tighten that up, and then the general contractor will come back and put on the exterior siding, tie into the existing building, connect to the existing services. And so it's going to be a fairly short timeline to do that. It's just a matter of if and when equipment and/or supplies are available. Certainly, the economy is increasing with construction costs, so there is a little bit of risk there, but I believe that Jeremy and his team have provided a little bit of contingency, and that's involved with that, to help absorb some of that increase. But other than that, I think it's going to be a very simple project and can be buttoned up fairly quickly.
Great. Thank you for that, Vicky. It looks very interesting. I see the reading room being moved into this building, whereas, and then the computers and whatnot in where the reading room is now are in that area anyway. And it looks, it looks exciting. We're excited to see that. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor Souls, and thank you to Lucy. She's absolutely an amazing person and doing just wonderful work for the community. Thank you. I have several questions for, for Lucy, but I think in, with respect to time, I'll just see her individually at the library. On the modular, is it, is this like pre-engineered? Is this basically something that's just being purchased and, and put on there? Or is it going to be a pre-construction modular that's, it's, it's built to some spec, if that makes sense?
Yeah, and so with modular construction, these two halves of a building will be constructed in a factory that is tempered, and they do have a quality control check sheet that they go through. They will be delivered on-site in halves, and then erected onto the foundations with a crane, and then harnessed down so that there is seismic hold downs there. And then after that, then the general contractor that does get awarded the project will put on the exterior siding, button up the roof, and then do the service connections. But yes, to answer your question directly, they are built off-site and will be delivered via a semi-truck.
And through the chair, the, yeah, of course, I'm late to the game, so, you know, my comment is, I, I would have loved to have seen a larger addition to the library, just noting how, how busy it is. But, and if there was some real easy way to make this bigger, that would be great, but that's probably totally unfeasible at this point. It seems to me that the biggest potential risk of surprise is on the tendering, and it comes in too expensive, I suspect. Is there, I just, with the, the foundation, I just wondering if there's an op, if, if we run into that kind of surprise, if there's an opportunity for our workforces to be doing the, the, the footings for this building. It's just something, and I'm not really asking for an answer, but it's just something that's in the back of my mind, because we do have some really good carpenters on staff. The, yeah, that's, that's great. Just thanks for the update. That really, really helpful.
Good. Thanks, Counselor Palmer. Counselor Charlotte, and then Counselor Elliott.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all three of you, Jeremy, Vicky, Lucy. I'm excited to see this come back. I was concerned about costs with it. It sounds, hopefully, the risks have been mitigated. Like Counselor Palmer said, it'd be lovely if we could afford to do bigger ones, which is, realistically, it's nice to see this go on the ground, because I agree with Lucy, digital literacy is going to be a critical piece of our recovery going out of this pandemic. I think it's been shown to be the critical piece of. Um I think it's been shown to be the critical piece of infrastructure. Um just like this community is really pulled together for literacy in the past, so hopefully we can do so again and that this, this space. Will be one of those tools we need in order to really build that capacity in our community. So, thanks very much. Uh and I appreciate the questions that are getting into the risk mitigation of this. Because hopefully it is more of a permanent build and we don't see any problems coming forward.
Thank you, Counselor Charlotte. Counselor Elliot.
Uh yes, Your Worship, uh just curious that coming through the wall into the uh new space, i- is that uh the challenge that you have? Or are, is there a plan for that?
Yeah, and so within our documents, there is a detail that shows how we would deal with. The opening of the doors and, and the threshold at the floor and at the ceiling space. That would ensure that that connection is weather tight. And so there is no anticipation that any water would be coming in and it would be. Um a sealed entity so that there is no drafts and that sort of nature.
So it's a, a manageable situation?
It is. We do this all the time with additions to projects and so, yeah, it's quite manageable.
I, I do question the, the size. I, I know that just alone on the virtual, virtual reality, the, the headset option there will uh. Will likely get a lot of, a lot of takers and uh I, I'm sure the kids would be all over that and maybe set a few adults as well. So I, I think, I think it's a great, great concept, but I, I wish it were there as well.
Great. Thanks, Counselor. Any further uh questions from counsel? Counselor Palmer.
Thanks, Mayor Solz. Actually, a question for you, uh Mayor. Is, are, is there tourism funds being used for this? And I, you may not have the answer right away, but I guess what's sort of in the back of my mind, based on. Um Lucy's presentation, it seems like this is a, a very significant tourist facility in addition. Uh a community facility and I, I just wonder if there was, it was any leveraging for that, for this particular project.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Braun, uh do you have any uh input regarding tourist dollars uh for the Okanagan Regional Library?
I believe it was discussed in passing uh at one point with the Tourism Initiatives Committee, but no, it's not part of our current resort development strategy. Which is not to say it couldn't be brought forward as a, as a potential um, uh item to discuss for our next resort development strategy, which begins in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Elliot.
Uh further to Tim's uh comment there, uh my time, uh I've spent some time in Whistler and in Canmore. And the library and both those communities are uh, they're, they're thriving. They're, they're jam-packed with people. And if we're on the same, the same category, I, I think this library uh, yeah, should be evaluated on par with that or use those as models.
Great. So we'll leave that with Jeremy and his crew and uh, and let them give some thought to how that needs to be done. Uh any last words, Jeremy?
Thank, thank you for that, that uh, that op, this opportunity uh to come to update you guys. Um and I, I didn't, I didn't get a, I didn't take the opportunity to say thank you to your staff as well. We've used a lot of their time for this project and they've been really helpful. And I know they've got a lot on their plates and then we came along and we put on a whole bunch more. And so um Lori's been great, Troy's been great. Um I think it's important that they're mentioned. And i- i- thank you for, for your supportive comments. And um, you know, I think we're all on the same page in terms of looking forward to seeing this. Um, you know, seeing the end result. I think it's gonna be fantastic. We would have loved it bigger too, trust me. Um, you know, there were some side comments there, but um this, it, it is, it is what it is for, for some very specific reasons that we won't get into. And uh, but, but yeah, th- thank you again very much.
Sorry, uh could I add one more question?
Go ahead, Counselor Elliot.
Is, is there a capacity to go higher, another floor to that building?
You know what? That's a, that's a technical question I, I can't answer. It is outside of the scope of where we've made it to at this point. So I think even if the answer was technically yes, I don't, I can't see the project uh taking that sort of turn at this point.
No, I just say i- if in future you might have that opportunity or, or if there was funding available, would it be possible?
Maybe, maybe I could add just a comment there. This is Dawn Nettleton, the CEO. I think anything can be done with enough money, but I, I think. Our, our challenge is as soon as you start to go to a second story, it gets a little bit more difficult to manage it. And then you also probably need to add an elevator, those types of things for the uh, to accommodate different people. I think the one advantage of going a modular thing like this is if, if in the future additional dollars came along or something else. To expand it larger or, or do that, the modular can quite easily be kind of lifted off again. You can build off of your foundation and, you know, move the modular to a, a little bit further out or move it. It's, it's, it's more, more options that way than a permanent build would be. So uh perhaps gives us some other options for the future that a, a permanent build might not. Vicky, maybe you can comment if that, that's true or not.
Yeah, to answer your question about expanding it any further, uh unfortunately, the building isn't sprinkled. And so a second story at this element would not be feasible. Um and certainly having that flexibility with modular construction being able to be relocated. Uh fairly quickly, uh and then you could build an expansion that is more suitable for uh the library itself. Um, but yes, it, it is one of those challenges of do you do it now or do you do it later? And if, if there does become availability of more funding before we truly set um foundation in the ground to expand this addition. Certainly, the modulators can uh go as far as sixty feet long. And so you could almost double the square footage of what you have or currently on the drawings now.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you all for uh coming and presenting. We appreciate it. And we're, we're looking forward to this coming to fruition. Appreciate that. Thank you again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
All right. We're gonna move on now to uh staff reports, item nine A, Development Services Population Report. We have a presentation, so I'm gonna turn this over to uh Ms. Wade and she can introduce our guests.
Good afternoon, uh Mayor and Council, and thank you, Your Worship. Uh today, um we have um two representatives from Ready Intelligence. Who have been working with us since last summer on this population report, which is uh very critical to the O C P update. And also will help us to inform infrastructure planning and community economic developments, um economic, community economic development strategy. So it's being used by all the departments and um. In Director Braun and Director Black have been involved in this process. It's also been through management and also the O C P focus group. And um Andrew Remlow and Andrew Baldwin are both here today. And Andrew Remlow will be doing the uh presentation. Andrew has extensive uh experience in population projections, demography. For over twenty years, has also been a professor at U B C A. In regards to the School of Community and Regional Planning and been educating planners on demography and projections for the very purpose of long-term planning. He's been very involved with um various municipalities and helping them across B C. And um brings a tremendous amount of wealth and knowledge and is familiar with resort communities as well. So um I just wanted to acknowledge that you have a report before you. And then attached to your, your report is a very detailed uh population and housing projections report. And Andrew will be talking to both the report and the attached report of population today. So I will turn this over to Andrew now. I believe he's there somewhere.
I'm here. Thank you so much, Mary Ann, uh Your Worship. Thanks for having us today. Uh I'm just gonna share my screen here and go through a, a couple of slides that we've drawn out of our, uh, out of our report for you guys. And then we'll finish off and entertain some questions from you guys as well. Uh can everybody see my screen there?
Go ahead. Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Your Worship. So thought we'd start out with a project objective, move through some uh, uh data sources and definition of terms. Uh look at uh some different population groups, total peak population and, and some population benchmarking that we did as per part of this project. So in terms of the project objective, as uh, uh Mary Ann said, a- as part of the official community plan review and update. We were asked to develop a series of long-range population uh and housing projections out to twenty-one, twenty forty-one. For the city's population and associated housing requirements. Now, as, as Mary Ann had said, I, I've worked with a lot of municipalities uh across Canada to develop population projections and. Building demographic projections can be relatively straightforward. I often joke that there's only a, a couple of elements that, uh, that need to be considered. Uh just about everybody gets older every year, a bunch of people move around, some people have kids and some people die. And you've sort of got demography one-on-one. But compiling them for resort-type regions, city regions like you guys uh in Revelstoke, they do present a unique set of circumstances. So in order to sort of tackle some of those issues, we use both traditional as well as non-traditional data sources and some. I'd say traditional approaches and non-traditional approaches in terms of uh, of, of developing the future outlook for uh, for the city. So before I get into sort of the, the details of, of how we went about compiling the projections, we thought we would just start out with a summary of findings. And in terms of looking at the different population groups, we broke uh the city's population into, to three general groups. To arrive at what we call the total peak population within, uh, within the city. Those three components were usual residents. Our estimates for twenty nineteen were about eighty-two hundred and fifty-nine. Shadow population, uh about another five hundred and fifty people. Uh peak tourists, about eighty-seven hundred and twenty-eight. And then our total peak population, just in terms of adding all of those up. Uh was about seventeen thousand people potential within the municipality at any one particular point in time in twenty nineteen. If all of your tourist accommodation were filled up at once. So from that base, we developed three scenarios going forward, a low, a baseline and, and a high scenario. And you can see the range here with regard to the usual residents on the low side, adding about six hundred and sixty new residents over the next two decades. And at the high side, about uh twenty-seven hundred, which would put our total peak population growth in the range of between two and four thousand people. Uh over the next two decades. So there's where we ended up. Big question is how did you get there? Uh in terms of starting with some definition of terms, our primary population group, we called our usual resident population. And this is uh the population within the city, Canadian citizens, immigrants, non-immigrant, non-permanent residents. Who are counted at what's called their usual place of residence. And this is where they would spend the majority of their time within a year, and so that would be more than half of the year. Uh this aligns well, or it aligns with uh other uh things like the census, which actually tabulate a population for usual residents. Also uh B C stats, that which is the provincial government statistical arm, which compiles projections for local health areas. And other economic data uh aligns with their definitions as well as things like C R A, you know, the Canada Revenue Agency. In terms of how they define a usual resident. Our secondary population group was the shadow population. And this was equivalent for you guys to your seasonal population in the city who may either be working or recreating. And to some degree may or may not be captured by some of those more traditional data counts. Uh whether that be the census or B C stats or, or Canada Revenue Agency. And then there was our tourist and visitor population. And this is uh, we calculated this as a total peak number of visitors who could be accommodated within the city's hotel. And then associated visitor accommodation, like short-term rental accommodation. And then quite simply, total peak population. It was just the sum of those uh, those three population groups. In terms of our data sources, our traditional data sources were Statistics Canada. We can get uh information on the composition of uh, of population on associated demographic and economic side of things. Uh B C stats, again, the provincial statistical agency, they do municipal estimates on an annual basis for all municipalities within the province. As well as compiled forecasts, uh and then B C vital stats for the births and deaths side of things. The other population groups that we looked at and the data sources to look at those population groups included Telus Insights. Uh some really interesting data coming out of them, Tourism Revelstoke, Revelstoke Accommodation Association, Destination B C, Air D N A. Uh Revelstoke Mountain, obviously, for some of their development proposals. And then the City of Revelstoke Planning Department as well, again, on the development side of things. Coming out of some of that work, we also jumped in and did a bunch of population benchmarking. And some of the data sources that we used for our benchmarking were B C Ministry of Finance in terms of municipal expenditure data. How did you guys compare to your peers within the province? Uh B C Assessment, so this is again the provincial body that uh assesses values of all properties within the province. Is a really valuable source with respect to uh, uh the residential side of things. Uh I C B C Vehicle Registrations, uh Canada Revenue Agency. And then we also went to the municipal and regional engineering departments. And specifically for you guys, as well as this host of other, of other selected communities. Uh we were looking at uh water treatment data as well as a means to benchmark your population, so. So there's sort of the glory details about uh some of the background data. This is what the usual resident population looked like going back to nineteen uh ninety-six. And you can see from about nineteen ninety-six to about twenty-ten, your population did decline relatively significantly. And but in that post-twenty-ten period up to twenty-nineteen, it turned around and certainly grew. Uh i- in terms of some of the drivers to that, certainly it was outmigration and economic circumstance in those early, uh, early days. And then in that post-twenty-ten period, we saw this notion of net migration come back and actually add population to uh, to the municipality over that period. Now, B C stats in terms of their people twenty-twenty projection, their forecast out to twenty forty-one was uh for your population to grow from about eighty-two hundred and fifty-nine. To about eighty-nine hundred and nineteen people. So that's about six hundred and sixty new people. Uh it's under half a percent growth per annum, overall eight percent growth. Now, we looked at this with regard or within the context of, of this being like kind of a low scenario. Uh when you look at the recent changes with respect to uh the composition as well as magnitude of population growth. If we look at the components of change from a demographic side of things, there's two ones that we can look at. Net migration, so that's the net difference between the ins and outs, people migrating. And natural increase, that's the annual difference between births and deaths. And under the B C stats forecast, net migration to uh into the city was probably in the range of about thirty-five to forty people a year. Uh relative to that more recent history, relatively low. So this is why we looked at this one component and said, well, it, I, we would classify this as being a, a low projection going forward. With respect to that projection, the other interesting thing of note here on the demographic side is that notion of natural increase, which has historically added people to your population. By about twenty-twenty-six, because of an aging population and relatively low fertility rates. Uh natural increase actually becomes natural decrease and subtracts people away from your population. Um this situation uh is, will be seen in British Columbia as well as Canada as a whole. Uh it just depends on when. B C is about twenty-thirty-six. Interestingly enough, a region like Victoria, they're actually already in this situation as well. So this was one of the components that we looked at in terms of deeming this to be a relatively low scenario. The other thing that we looked at was not the absolute number, but the composition of these changes. This is what Revelstoke's population looks like in twenty nineteen on an age-specific basis. So that's age groups across the bottom and you can see the most typical resident or the largest age group was that thirty to thirty-four population. You guys are a little bit different. You do attract a younger population or have since twenty-ten. And it's seen that bulge in that thirty to thirty-four-year-old age group. Provincially, we actually see that bulge in the fifty, fifty-nine-year-old age group. And that's that traditional post-World War Two baby boom bulge that uh we see, it characterizes a lot of uh communities across Canada. In looking to twenty forty-one, this is what the B C stats projection looked like. And you can see it back to that cardinal rule of demography that just about everybody gets older every year. And that thirty to thirty-four-year-old age group becomes fifty to fifty-four over the next two decades. But that level of migration actually left quite a, a, a hole within your population here. That's about a thirty percent decline in that young labor force population. So this was the second factor that we looked at that deemed for us, at least on the demography side, for this to be a relatively conservative or a low projection. As we looked at things like the plan for the mountain as well as uh aspirations to grow jobs within the city. The mountain in and of itself for their development plans, looking at adding upwards of a thousand jobs. Uh relative to uh direct jobs relative to the mountain, not even talking about the indirect or induced jobs. Uh this demographic picture didn't really square itself with what some of the economic objectives were. So this led us to go back to the projection and develop what we called our baseline scenario. And in order to develop the baseline scenario, we looked at what the past decade's share. So since twenty-ten, what uh, what share Revelstoke got of B C's net migration as it ramped its, its net migration up. And so we could use that base, that, that basis to, to develop what we called our baseline. And so we could use that base, that, that basis to, to develop what we called our baseline. And going from about eighty two hundred and fifty nine to about ninety nine hundred and thirty two, relative to the low at eight percent growth, this is about a twenty percent growth in, in the city's population over the next two decades. Net additions of about sixteen hundred people. Within this, we also went and looked at some of, again, the aspirations of the mountain to grow as well as the economy to grow. And we decided to, to develop a high scenario as well. And this empirically, we were able to look at the last five years, the most recent period in terms of Revelstoke's share of net migration to the province of British Columbia. And then if we continued or if the city continued to achieve that share, this is what would, what would result, leading to a forecast population in the range of ten, eleven thousand people by the end of twenty forty one. That's the usual resident component of, of the population. What are the housing implications of that? Well, there's a twenty percent increase on the baseline side of things. We take a demographic approach to the housing side of things as well. These are what we call household formation rates. We get them from the census as well. And you look to the early stages of the lifecycle, the twenty to twenty four, twenty five to twenty nine year old age group, household formation rates in the range of about a third of kids saying they're forming their own households. But we can see how it increases very significantly as we, as we get into later stages of family formation. It's applying this composition of household formation on the age specific side to the age specific population forecast that we can come up with the requirements on the housing side of things. And that twenty percent increase in terms of the baseline would result in about a twenty four percent increase in, in the total occupied housing stock. And that would require about eight hundred and sixty seven net new homes to be added to the city over the next two decades. So then in looking at this notion of shadow population, so the, that population that's not deemed to be a permanent resident. Our initial kick at this was to look at the total stock of unoccupied housing within, within the city. In addition to the occupied stock that surveyed by stats can, they also look and see how many unoccupied dwellings there were. They work with B C assessment here to get what they call their, their full registry record of property so that they can tabulate these. And so as an initial kick of determining your shadow population, we took that two hundred and thirty unoccupied dwelling units and essentially filled them up with people. We filled them up at two point three persons per unit, which is the number, average number of people per unit you guys have already in your community. And what that resulted in is about five hundred and thirty people with, working within that shadow population or as part of that shadow population. Given the dwelling stock would have grown between twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, our expectation was the unoccupied stock would have increased as well. And along with the scale of that shadow population, growing to about five hundred and sixty people. And then again, going forward as the dwelling stock grows under the baseline scenario, so too does the scale of that shadow population, growing up to about seven hundred people by twenty forty one. So as I said in previous meetings, if, I think we're conservative anywhere, we're pretty good on the usual, usual resident side of things. I'd say that if we were out anywhere, we may be conservative on this measure here. And that's, again, there's not a lot of quantitative data that we can look at. The Telus data are, are certainly insightful for this. And I'll double back to some of our population benchmarking and talk a little bit more about the scale of the shadow population as well. So how do we come up with the visitor population? Well, we looked at hotel beds as well as short term vacation rentals. And what we were able to do is to actually get the number of hotel beds within the city. So the notion came up is this is like heads on pillows. And so in addition to the total number of hotel rooms, we can look at the number of beds and find out what the total peak number of potential guests are, or literally heads on pillows. And our assessment was about twenty four hundred and twenty eight beds. And then potential guests would be about sixty seven hundred and twenty eight. We also looked at the short term vacation rental side of things. We found that there was about a hundred and two of them registered using a, a variety of data sources like Air D N A, Destination B C and Revelstoke Accommodation Association. We were able to, to get a larger estimate in terms of not just the registered, but how many units may be working on the non-registered side of things. And what we found was that, given those estimates, potential visitors in short term vacation rentals were probably in the order of about, of about two thousand. So in terms of total occupancy, if we looked at this notion of full occupancy of sixty seven hundred and twenty eight in the hotel side of things, about another two thousand. So that put total peak visitor population in the range of about eighty seven hundred and twenty eight. Just for fun, we had the data, so we went back and looked at what average occupancy was, as well as a high and a low, and just stuck some average occupancy around that. In terms of moving forward, what we were able to do as well was to look at all of the development permits that were being considered. Right now, there was about seven hotel development proposals that were in various stages, about seven hundred more units. And in terms of going forward, what we arrive at by twenty forty one is a total peak visitor population of about ten thousand and forty one. So that brings me full circle back around to our total population here in terms of our three scenarios. So from that, what we also would like to talk about is this notion of, of population benchmarking. And Telus Insights was contracted back in twenty eighteen to look at, in addition to a visitor population, how many people were in and about the city, our resident population as well. And in, in May, they actually estimated that the city's resident population was in the range of about thirteen thousand people, reaching a peak of about fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty by the end of December in twenty eighteen. So this was a little bit of a head scratcher for us in terms of this being deemed the resident population relative to these other sort of common, more traditional approaches to, to looking at population data. So this pushed us into this sort of population benchmarking approach to things. And in going through and looking at it, we looked at municipal per capita expenditure. So these are, this is provided by, by the, the provincial ministry. And we can see that on things like general government expenditures, protective services, waste management, water services or sewer services, Revelstoke benchmarks relatively well, both with respect to your peers, so geographically up and around you. But then also relative to average for cities within the province of about five to ten thousand population. So certainly there are some ups and downs here, but nothing that stands out that says that that benchmark population in the range of about eighty two fifty was, was way, way out. We looked at passenger vehicle registrations through I C B C as well. And what we found was that in terms of personal use vehicles registered per resident in the city, again, back to that eighty two hundred and fifty nine population as our benchmark, you guys benchmarked relatively well on that front as well, at about point four two vehicles per person. The B C average, it was a little bit higher. Average of your communities up there was a little bit higher as well. I understand from staff that you guys have a great cycling community up there. So this was probably one of the drivers to this being a little bit lower relative to both your peers as well as the provincial average. And then probably the most interesting one from my perspective was the water data. So we were able to get water treatment data from engineering, both on an annualized side of things, but then also with respect to monthly. So we could look at what the variation was through your, your high tourist season, specifically through the winter months where water consumption for things like gardening and lawns doesn't grow very significantly. And again, at about eighty two hundred and fifty nine, you guys benchmarked relatively well, two hundred and ten meters cubed of water treated per population. Average of your peer communities was about two hundred and twenty six. B C wide average in twenty seventeen was about a hundred and eighty three, a little bit lower. Lower mainland, a lot of the communities here are water metered. We have a bunch of communities on, on the island as well, which are water metered, which tends to push that, those consumption or those treatment numbers down as well. So, so we used all of these data to, again, try and benchmark it and try and look at that Telus data to unpack it a little bit. And just as a, a quick example here, to look at the backwards math on this. If we were to go up to the top, top side of Telus's resident population at fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, that would push the total treatment down to about one hundred and nineteen cubic meters per population. So it pushes it outside of the realm of what I would say would be reasonable on the water treatment side of things. So what this prompted us to do was to go back to Telus and say, we think we may have some definitional issues here in terms of what you're classifying as residents and what we're classifying as residents. So can we work together to try and figure that out? And our proposal back to Telus was, or request to them was, were they able to break the number of people down, the residents that they had within, within their survey or the handsets that they were actually tracking into these monthly buckets? So one to three months, one to six months, seven to twelve, ten to twelve months. And they were able to do that fortunately, and, and community economic development worked along with us in, in developing these. And what they came back to us and said was that, given this table, they did it both on a consecutive and a non-consecutive month. That this seventy seven hundred and seventy to eighty four, eighty five hundred was the population that was most likely to be permanent residents that would consider Revelstoke to be their home. So this aligned much better with what we would look at traditional residents, so a longer term permanent resident within, within Revelstoke. And aligned more closely with what the census definitions were. But in addition to that, what they were also able to say was, this population in the range of maybe about ten to thirteen thousand was the population that was most likely to include short term or seasonal residents. So this is where I double back to our initial assessment or estimate of, of our shadow population at about between five, six hundred people. If we're conservative anywhere within the projection series, it's probably there. Do we get up to the level that Telus may expect here in the range of about two thousand people? I'm not sure. I think they may still have some tourists within that bucket of, of thirteen thousand to get up there if I have to look at these other consumption metrics. But it was really great to work with the guys at Telus to try and get a better handle on both the resident side of things, the usual resident side of things, as well as, as that shadow population as well. Thought I'd leave off with just a couple of key trends. One of the most important ones from the demography side of things and in terms of long term planning is that certainly Canada's population is going to continue to grow, but it's going to change much more dramatically in the coming years than it has in the past. It's going to do so predominantly along two fronts. One is certainly aging as that big bulk of the post-World War Two boom, now fifty five to seventy five ages into retirement. But again, the, the federal government now is moving towards immigration targets this year at four hundred and one thousand people. Next year, four hundred and eleven, four hundred and twenty one thousand the year after, well above the previous targets at three fifty. So the face of our, of Canada is certainly going to change as well. You guys do have a younger population, but it's going to see those same two components. One, the aging of your existing residents and the need to backfill for them in terms of some of your labor requirements as well. So I would expect that, yes, your faces are certainly going to get much older, but the new ones are going to be much more diverse than what, than what they have in the past. And like many other communities, you're certainly going to need to attract young labor force participants to see your economy continue to grow and diversify. And this notion of housing availability and affordability that has been a, a bit of a thorn in the side within the, for the planners here in the lower mainland over the longer term, now it's characterizing just about every community throughout the province and across the country. So I think this issue of housing availability and affordability is going to be one of the key trends that's going to characterize you guys as well in, in the coming years. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I will turn it back over to your worship and Mary Anne and entertain any questions.
Great. Thanks, Andy. Appreciate all that information. The amount of departments that can use that information as we move forward is, is going to be absolutely incredible because we can use it for economic development, we can use it for planning, we can use it for public works, engineering. Just every department in the community and even attracting new business, knowing what we need to attract and how to attract. So we really appreciate that information. Before I go to counsel, Ms. Wade, do you have any comments?
Thank you, worship. I, I want to echo that. This has been a really good interdepartmental exercise where we're all very excited to have this information and that it's really helping us to inform moving forward with the O C P updates. Also will help us with our housing action plan and infrastructure and our economic strategy. So this has been a really good piece of work and very collaborative among departments. And we have engaged, you know, with our focus group and we were at the Economic Development Commission last night with your worship. We have also touched upon this at the Social Development Committee. And so we are really trying to spread the good word about this information.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wade. Counselors, do you have any comments or questions of Mr. Ramlo? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Andy, wow. I've been involved with a number of population studies over the years in various municipalities. And this is by far the best and most robust I've ever seen. Quite frankly, when I knew about the, sort of the dialogue around population and knowing where that is, I, I was very, very skeptical about what it was going to be because my experience is it's people's sort of wishful thinking kind of thing rather than based on solid information. Particularly impressed with the nuances that you put in there and, and, and marrying, or I guess, putting on top, it's sort of like, that's kind of like those, you have the waves in the sea and then the secondary waves that create those little crests and troughs. And yeah, so, you know, I had questions as you were going along and then sure enough, you answered repetitively. So yeah, it, the, yeah, even like with the illegal dwellings, the shadow, yeah, you hit all of them. So thank you very much. It, for, for me, it, it gives me a lot more confidence. I think it's going to be very helpful for me as a counselor in supporting how we use those population stats in, in various ways in the future. I certainly look forward to seeing how the, you know, the reality, of course, there's lots of things that we don't know. You know, how rural areas, you know, as a result even from COVID, that become more desirable places and with remote work, it, that could be a, a big factor, but those things are unknown. So I, I really, I thank you very much. I really look forward to seeing how this pans out as we move to the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, any further comments or questions for, for Andy? Counselor Elliott?
Okay, thank you, worship. Couple of questions. The Telus Insight Population Study was a significant cost to our community. What's your take on the information that came from that?
Invaluable. It's, with respect to the, the data that it provides you guys, it is well beyond just the scope of, of this particular study. Only one small component of, of that Telus data focused on the resident population. With respect to community economic development, I would have to let Ingrid speak to how there, it's being used there. But certainly invaluable with regard to scope and scale with regard to the tourist population, volumes of people in and out, places of origin of those people. So invaluable in terms of moving forward on the, on the economic development side. Valuable certainly as well with regard to some of these notions of long term population. Initially, I have to say I was pretty skeptical as well as I, as I see a fourteen thousand population and I look at some of the benchmarking going, that's not possible. But as we worked with, with C E D as well as Telus to further refine those data, I'm much more comfortable now with regard to, to what the implications of those data are for the resident population and long term planning issues.
Great. You know, many years ago, I suggested, you know, we, we'd look at the average skier visits and snowmobile participation at our snowmobile club as a measure, as a number. And the number that we used to target at the ski resort was two thousand people per day was an average. And now we're probably around twenty two, twenty three, twenty four hundred people per day throughout the season, six months of the year, five months of the year, another two or three hundred per day at the snowmobile club. So that's twenty five hundred extra people average throughout the season will be visiting tourists. It might, might, and I think, you know, adding to the census data would have been an easier, simpler way to, to gain that population base for our community. And I'm wondering if that makes sense.
I, I would say it's another leg in the stool. Right now, with respect to trying to, to track or trying to track where people are coming from as well as the magnitude of them from an economic development perspective, the Telus data, it, it does provide insight that we, you guys, we would not have otherwise. So I would think from an economic development perspective, we should be trying to stick as many, as many legs underneath the stool as, as we can.
Yeah. So I, I'm glad you've come up with the same number that I, we probably could have, you know, like that, what we were coming up with, ten thousand, eleven thousand as what we were coming up with ten thousand, eleven thousand as our base population as a average throughout our season is is a, you know, also a rough estimate anyway. So it's it's great that you've confirmed that. Just on the affordability and the housing, you you've trajectoryd, you've had a trajectory of growth over that to to twenty forty one. Does our housing pricing, we're we're seem to be even a bit more more expensive than other communities. Is that going to be a hindrance in achieving that number?
Yeah, a fascinating, great question. I I'd have to say yes. If there is a steep increase in prices, it's going to hinder the ability of you guys to attract a young workforce. So where this comes in is in some other work in terms of the housing, shorter term housing needs assessment as well. We're talking about here is sort of longer term demographic trends and how they impact housing. And that that shorter term housing needs assessment is is where some of those issues will be unpacked on the planning side.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. No, I think it's great information. It's it'd be nice to spend some time going through it and I'm sure Mary Anne and Ingrid are are all over it. So thank you.
Good. Counselor Charlotte, Counselor Ryan, any comments or questions at this time?
Uh, no, just I echo what my fellow counselors have said. It's nice to see a really detailed dig into what does this actually mean? I've always been fascinated by the Tellus Insights data and I always felt like there was maybe a bit more to dive into there to really grasp it for our community and what are the implications? Because there are a lot of implications that we need to deal with and I'm hoping that this will help us prioritize that and really inform those decisions and that work. So grateful to hear it. Glad to see all the pieces working well together. Makes me very happy. It appeals to the geek in me. So thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Souls. To the Director Wade, I'm sure you're excited about this as well. Can you can you just sort of review how this is going to, very, very succinctly, how it's going to inform the O C P? And what role council will have, like I I'm not sure exactly what's been directed as far as council endorsing or adopting sort of projection growths as it informs the O C P?
Ms. Wade?
Thank you, your worship, through to Counselor Palmer. Yes, so this information you've you've hit on a very key question. So this information will be used to help us inform growth management in the O C P. And there, because we have the three scenarios, it's a discussion we need to have in the community and with council and our stakeholders as regards to how we want to grow. And what does that mean when we grow in that direction? And the the next presentation, which is the engagement strategy, the having this discussion is in that engagement strategy. So you'll see how council will be involved in the decision making and how the focus group and the stakeholders and councils of committees, it's quite a detailed process that we'll be going through. And that's and what this really helps us with is understanding what we need from a land use perspective, what we need from an infrastructure perspective, and how to make the where we want to grow. And that will, in the past, O C P from two thousand and nine, it was a medium, which is the baseline in this one, which is often the best practices in planning. We're a little unique because of the our visitor population and the economic development. So we have to give consideration to that higher population growth because of what we're looking at from a economic perspective where we'll work very closely with a C E D on that. And we're also working very closely with engineering in regards to this. You know, looking at the twenty year horizon, what does that mean in our financial planning? And this information is also being used for the parks master plan as well.
And through the chair, it seems to me one of the big important ones, and this is where I my concern about skepticism of with some of the traditional population reports that I've seen elsewhere is informing the D C Cs. So that's because there's been weight put on that. So I think that's going to be a real, really super helpful as we push ahead with our D C Cs. So yeah, thank you very much to staff and to Andy and others that have been involved with that. Thank you very much. I find it very exciting.
Good. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Elliott, you have one more question?
Yeah, yes, Andy. Just on your peak tourist numbers, I think the you've got eighty seven hundred as the as the number as the total occupancy, every pillow is got a got a participant.
Yep.
How realistic is that?
Yeah, not super realistic unless you guys are planning on putting a bid together for the Olympics at sometime in the near future. But that's why as part of the table, we actually did also look at what a range of historical occupancy was as well. And so what any you your counsel or anybody reading the report is able to actually go in and and the numbers are all there in terms of even with respect to the peak at ten thousand and forty one, if you wanted to look at what a low on the occupancy was an average or the high, you could go in and actually back calculate any of those.
And that peak, is that for three, four months of the year or the entire year?
No, well, that would be at any one particular point in time. So I would be like on a daily basis, the whether it's for an extended period of time would be determined by how long people stay. So that's at any one particular date that if all of the pillows had heads on them in all tourist accommodation, that's what the number of people would be. If they chose to stay because there was a a longer two week event, say like the Olympics, then that would be for a two week period.
So so when, you know, I guess this is part of the planning. We have peak eighty seven hundred people occupying every pillow, but that's only valid for three months or two weeks out of the year at Christmas. And you know, when we get that complete occupancy of every bed, I'm just curious, or Alberta weekend, a family weekend or something like that. But it doesn't seem to spread like we don't have anybody in our town at at this stage. Are we building a plan to accommodate the eighty seven hundred max?
Um, I guess that's where you go into next steps in terms of of your consultation with the public. And just as an example, right now, like the average occupancy was about sixty two point three percent.
Yeah.
So that's what you're that's what you're talking about there. And this is where it it does go back to good planning and the the engineering side of it in terms of infrastructure. And some of those conversations will be had with the public as well in terms of where do you want to go?
Yeah. And and I guess when you talk on occupancy, that's a hotel room booking, not a pillow booking.
Yeah, the the hotels themselves would be booked. People aren't outbooking individual pillows per se, but
when they get a sixty two percent sixty two percent room booking.
That's right. Yes, that's the that's not pillow occupancy. No, 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 that
So again, we got eighty seven hundred feet as a total maximum population, but the realities might be different.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. All right, ask Counselor, Ms. Braun, Counselor Palmer, and then Ms. Wade.
Just had a quick comment because I think, you know, where the Tellus data really shows its value is in looking at the tenure of stay, as Andrew's mentioned. You know, where we can measure the the duration of of stay. So you have quality visits are clocked between twenty five and seventy two hours. And that's where we know people are with unique devices are are in town as well as being able to tell their age demographics, where they're from, that kind of thing. And that's where we see the numbers really be valuable for forecasting what the impact of our destination marketing efforts are as well as, you know, looking at projecting.
You've cut out.
Oh, you just got muted.
Okay, all right. We'll go to Counselor Palmer then.
Just a quick comment, Mayor Souls, regarding the that generally unrealistic absolute maximum heads on pillows. The the one scenario that we I think that occasionally from time to time in some years that we possibly hit that is when we have the highway closures that we get that influx. So I I think that even that number is a useful thing saying that's because that might be the time that we do hit the that's those sort of crisis things when the highway's been closed. Thank you.
Thanks for that comment. Ms. Braun, you're back up and running. Do you want to further comment before I go to Ms. Wade?
Just to add that, you know, when you look at the Tellus data, what's really been useful and we'll have more information coming to council on this later once we fully analyzed it, but some of the Tellus data that we gathered through the pandemic period really shows. And so I think rather than even looking at absolute numbers, what we're looking at is the patterns and the proportion drop off, right? So where Tellus data shows us in October, sorry, say December of twenty nineteen, we had six thousand five hundred and twenty unique visitors here for a quality experience. In twenty twenty one, or December twenty twenty, we had two thousand four hundred and sixty. So that was a decline of sixty two percent. And that's the value right there is telling us that we know, you know, with the pandemic, even with the mountain being open, we were down by over sixty percent in our quality visitation. So that's longer stays than twenty four hours.
Great. Thank you for that. Ms. Wade?
Thank you, your worship. Just further to Counselor Elliott's question about, you know, the peak visitors, one of the really important thing in resort planning is understanding what that maximum number could be. And that helps us with understanding how, you know, flushing toilets, giving water, roads. And it's a very basic planning tool that we need so that we can make sure we can accommodate that very high peak population. And we would have it on certain times like, you know, around Christmas or peak things in the summer, highway closures. So we have to be able to support those scenarios with our infrastructure. So it's really, really important to know that number. And yes, will we be at it twenty four, seven, three hundred and sixty five days of the year? No. But we have to be able to plan for that so we can accommodate.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, counsel? Saying none, I want to thank you, Andy, again for your presentation. Appreciate all that you're doing for our community. Very much appreciated. And again, take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship and honorable members of council and staff. Thanks for having us out. Ciao.
Great. All right. Ms. Wade, do you have another comment? Your hands up or we're going to go into the next next presentation, the O C P review and update. So if you want to carry on with that, we appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, your worship. As many of council knows, we've been on a a long journey over the last year and change to move forward on the O C P project. And we have so far to date done the vision and the priorities and established a focus group. Started down on the Community Energy Emissions Plan and now we're moving into an engagement strategy to take the information, the population information, the master planning, understanding base, the base tools that we will need to develop a framework for the O C P update. And Kelly Lernard has been our consultant, helping us with the engagement pieces as well as the long term policies that we'll be developing in house. She is a very experienced, long range environmental planner that has a lot of experience in developing policies for O C Ps and other major documents. She has is also trained as an I A P two. So she's aligned with our policy, our A twenty three policy for how we engage with public and has been very helpful to us and the community and helping us move along through this very complex process. So before you today, Kelly's going to present where we're at and the engagement strategy. You have a report and then attached to that report is the engagement strategy. So Kelly's presentation includes both the report and the attached engagement strategy. And Kelly will walk us through where we're at, where we're going. And we welcome comments from council and the look to see for some support in regards to where we're going. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kelly now.
Thank you. And I'm just going to share my screen, I think. I'm not super familiar with Teams.
Okay, we've got it up here now, Kelly.
Okay. So.
You can see it, Kelly.
Okay. Can you see the full screen there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, your worship and council for having me today. I'm going to be talking about the official community plan engagement strategy. And this is in the context of Revelstoke being a community that's experiencing amenity migration like Counselor Palmer just mentioned with Andrew's presentation there. I've been involved in several initiatives around this lately. And again, with COVID, we see these trends happening in communities such as Revelstoke all throughout North America. So today I'm going to talk about four items. Really a quick review on what's been done so far in the O C P project, who's involved and what their roles are. I'll introduce the community focus group that will be involved in helping shape the O C P engagement strategy. And then the strategy itself, which is included in the engagement package. So the purpose of the project is pretty straightforward, is to review and update the existing O C P so it's better aligned with community values that came forward in the vision check in process and the updated vision, community priorities and the master plans that are currently underway. As a reminder, we did the vision check in and updated community priorities. We started that back in October to December twenty nineteen. And we had over nine hundred and fifty participants provide their input on helping us update the vision priorities for the official community plan project. We brought the results and the statistics, the data to council in February of twenty twenty and they supported our request to move forward with a focus group that was comprised of council committees and community organizations between May and June twenty twenty. After the results of that input from those organizations and individuals, we were able to refine the vision and the priorities and bring that to council July fourteenth twenty twenty when you supported the updated vision priorities and the focus group representatives. And I think it's really key to keep in mind some of the key values that came forward throughout that process. We heard really loud and clear from the respondents to the engagement process that the people in the sense of community is what they value at Revelstoke the most. And of course, the environment and accessibility to nature are also top of mind. So we're making sure that we we keep these values at the forefront when we're doing our work in engaging with O C P. In order to make sure that we're transparent throughout the process, it's really important to be clear about who the decision maker is and what the decision to be made is. So of course, you council are the legislative decision maker on this. The decision make it, the decision statement that we are working towards is that in twenty twenty two, we will have recommended updates to the O C P presented to you for consideration. In terms of project roles and responsibilities, this is essentially the project team on the side here. Development Services is responsible for the project management, updates to council and coordinating internally with the various departments. And I'll talk a little bit more about the role of the focus group in a minute. The project consultants, we're here to provide support to the product sponsor and to the focus group as well. We have Lisa Seer, who's a local Revelstokian, and she's the focus group coordinator and she'll be the boots on the ground in terms of engaging activities if and when they're allowed, given COVID restrictions. And I'm here to support in terms of planning and engagement. In the engagement strategy in your agenda package, we outlined different categories of stakeholders that we did stakeholder mapping early on. And I think it's really important just to identify how those are organized because that does influence the level of engagement that we do with each. So primary stakeholders are typically defined as individuals or organizations that are directly impacted by this impacted by the decision. So that would be council and city departments in this instance, because council is the decision maker. And the city departments have to implement the O C P policies. That being said, we have a secondary stakeholder group that is defined as having an interest in the decision and is somewhat indirectly affected by the outcome. But they do have influence on the process. So that would be someone like the O C P focus group, the public. We have a whole list of different stakeholders groups that we identified in the engagement strategy as well. And tertiary stakeholders are those organizations or individuals that tend to know about the project that they may choose not to engage or to participate. And often that's provincial, federal agencies that we do let them know that the project is happening. But they decide it's not really but they decide it's not really something that they need to engage deeply on. I wanted to introduce who the focus group members are. This is just a quick screenshot of one of the recent meetings. Working in the time of COVID, we're doing a lot of the remoteness. So I just wanted to recognize them. We have 21 community members that have stepped forward. And they represent a variety of organizations throughout Rebelstoke. Industry, health, social arenas, culture, arts, tourism, industry, you name it. We're really excited that two co-chairs have been nominated at the last meeting, and that's Jane McNabb and Sheena Bell. So they're going to help step forward to guide the process with the focus group and with the community. The responsibilities of the focus group are to help co-design the engagement activities. So they'll be working alongside the project team to help us detail any of the tactics that we have at the community. They are championing the engagement and outreach within the community and their networks. They'll review and help review any reports and research that we take forward to the public and to council. Although be providing guidance on the public process itself. And of course, they're going to have a really important role when we get into the policy review phase as well. So I just want to thank those individuals. And we also will be celebrating them as the process goes forward. Today, I'm going to just provide some highlights of the engagement strategy. You have it in your agenda package, so I won't go into detail on that. But I did want to note that the strategy itself does just highlight the key tasks that we're going to be working through in the key subject areas. It does not detail all of the tactics. So, you know, there's going to be more coming forward than just, you know, one event around the subject matter. We're going to have a variety and a diversity of ways for people to engage. So as Marianne mentioned, the IAP2 or the International Association of Public Participation, it's quite a mouthful, but it does align with the city's public participation policy of which it is based on the IAP2 standards. And when we're designing engagement, understanding how different stakeholders might be affected by the decision and engaging accordingly is extremely important. It reduces risks in the decision and outcomes. And typically, the higher the impact on the stakeholders, the higher the expectation is on the level of engagement. So that's how we design how we're engaging and to what level we're engaging. We've broken the project into four key phases. We're going to talk in more detail, we'll see about phase two and three here. So right now, we're in phase two. We already completed the vision check-in and we've had an update from Development Service on the housekeeping amendments that are moving forward. We're raising awareness about the project right now. So hopefully, you've seen a few social media posts. We'll be providing some more tactics and information in the public in the near future. We're working through baseline information. So that's things like the population report that you just heard, which is absolutely fascinating and going to be extremely helpful in moving this process forward. We're looking at updating the mapping and other data areas as well. We are working with the public to understand what's important to them in terms of the OCP topics and asking them to share their best practices and some examples that they would like us to consider. We know there's a lot of local knowledge, a lot of local expertise, and we would love for folks to share that with us and help inform the process. One of the key features we'll be working on is the framing of the OCP. So looking at what's existing there now, what was considered in the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, other master plans and strategies at the city as well. And then a hot topic today at the council is, of course, the discussion of growth. So that is going to be something that will be a really important community discussion. And we've already had some great conversations and questions from the focus group to help us start to design this phase of the engagement and look through that. In August, we will be starting to organize in detail the policy review piece. And this is where we have best practices from the public utilized, conversations around growth and how we'd framed the OCP sections. Then in March of next year, we will have the draft policy presented to council for your consideration. So we have been working on this for a while and we've achieved a number of things. And I'm not going to go through all of this. But I did really want to bring up today that council is going to be invited to participate in many of the events. I think it's really important as the decision makers to hear the conversations directly from the public. So we'll be making sure to invite you directly to participate in these conversations throughout the next few months. One of the platforms because of COVID that, that we've, that we've been using is the Talk Rebelstoke page. So please promote that to everyone. I do want to highlight too that working with the focus group, they've really highlighted the need to make sure that everything is accessible, easy to understand, and that we're trying to reach a diversity of people. So we'll be using a whole bunch of different avenues. We'll be testing the types of language we're using so that people understand why they might want to engage and what they're engaging on in the community. So we're working really hard on that aspect of it. And this is just a screenshot of what's on the project page for Talk Rebelstoke right now. We're also making sure that we're very transparent in terms of who's involved in the project and what their roles are. We're reminding people that we do have a vision and priorities that were established from the community and highlighting the values that were brought forward in that process as well. And of course, we're celebrating a focus group. So if you haven't checked it out, there's profiles of the focus group members. And we've asked them to explain or describe why they love Rebelstoke and why they're involved in the OCP project. And there's some really great responses to that here. So that's, that wraps up just a very quick, high-level presentation on the great engagement strategy itself. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kelly, appreciate your presentation and all the work that you're doing on behalf of the community's part for the OCP. Counselors, any questions for Ms. Lernard? Counselor Charlotte.
Great, thank you, Kelly. It's been fun to watch this come together. It's been, looks great. Just looking at the Talk Rebelstoke website now, I'm just kind of comparing the bits that are out there for the community to look at. Couple of questions is, one, I noticed, I registered for the link for the talk from Kathy English, but then I ended up working the store, so I wasn't able to watch it. And I haven't been able to find the recording yet. Is that up somewhere and I'm just missing it? Or is it coming or what's the story?
It is coming soon. We're just working on, because Talk Rebelstoke is a new platform, we're trying to figure out all the nuances. And so we're just converting that presentation and we'll have it posted and then we'll send a note out to everyone. And it was noted also Counselor Charlotte that we'll be advertising events in the future on the, on the city's event page too. So you have some notice on it. We hope to have it every, every month, yeah.
It's always complicated to have these maps of where does it go, one of the different channels? Because each one works better for different audiences.
Sure.
But trying to sync them all up and make it a manageable workload to completely empathize. And on that note too, I'm hoping that we are tracking metrics on the Talk Rebelstoke site. And I'm wondering if, have, are we, do we have any benchmarks or ideas or starting points of where we're at that we can follow along with?
Yeah, so the great thing about Talk Rebelstoke is it does have a great analytical tool attached to it. And as you remember, when we did the vision check-in, we tracked, we did a lot of tagging and sentiment. Tracking, so we're going to be using an evidence-based approach again. And we'll be working with the focus group to establish some targets for the different phases of engagement. And then we can report that public, just to see how we're doing and where we might not be succeeding as well. And where.
That's great, because yeah, one of the comments that I'd seen somewhere in the report was talking about how there is this idea in the community that we are not being transparent. We are not communicating well enough. And it's a tough balance because you can communicate all you want, but if people don't see it or they don't hear it, what was the point, right? The tree fell in the forest, nobody was there to hear it. So it's, if we can look back, especially as we track those metrics and we can capture it, then after the fact, even if they didn't hear it at the time, when we're talking with citizens or peers or members or stakeholders later, we can say, well, you may not have seen it, but look how many people did.
Exactly.
Because it did get out. Right? You may have been the one, one of the ones missed or it just passed by it because we are inundated with so many messages in a day these days. But I'm really excited about using this tool. I know it's still relatively beta and new to the staff still. I have been seeing it shared a few times. I am still keen to be part of that, the voice to help spread it and encourage people to use it. I've been hesitating so far for a variety of reasons, but I'm also mindful of you guys talking about it being in data and we're still learning. So I'm wondering, how comfortable are you as the city's team with this now? Like where should I be encouraging people to start with in engaging?
Please share everywhere. Yeah, please do. We find that if it's peer-to-peer sharing, people are more likely to listen than coming from someone like me. So yes, please do share. It's ready to go. There's an idea board on there asking questions of the public of what's important to them. Yes, please do share, yeah.
Okay, I will endeavor to do that, thank you.
All right, thanks so much, Counselor. Any other comments from counselors? Ms. Wade, so as we move forward, we want to talk about the engagement process, but Counselor Palmer's just put his hand up, so I'll let him ask his question before we, before we do anything further. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's actually Counselor Elliott had his hand up before me.
Okay, I didn't see that. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Kelly, for, for the recap. We did a neighborhood engagement thing with the, up above by, by the hill crest there.
Johnson Heights, yeah.
Yeah, Johnson Heights. And I mean, there, there was a, I guess, when we put the temporary trailers up there, there was a lot of flack that the council faced because it didn't adhere to their, their vision or what they felt they, they were pushing towards. I'm just wondering whether the intent of the OCP to create neighborhoods or is the, are we big enough for distinct neighborhoods?
Yes, we are, we are definitely intent with creating neighborhoods. Johnson Heights was kind of the pilot for going through this as a community. And, you know, just given resources and capacity and updating the OCP, we'll be doing, I understand Development Services is going to be leading the various neighborhoods through their, the neighborhood planning processes. So Johnson Heights is the first one. And we just completed a community meeting and we'll be coming back for an update to council in the near future as well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I, I know Johnson Heights, they, they talked about having a distinct retail component up there. Arrow Heights is similar to, to, to creating that. Again, if, if they're laying all their wishlist out, shouldn't that fit into what our bigger overall plan i- is? I mean, to me, to create a, you know, a Christmas, you know, ideal scenario, if we, if we don't have a bigger picture first, it seems, seems kind of, kind of opening the door for challenges.
Yeah, and I, definitely, there's, there's different ways you can approach the neighborhood level planning and the overall community planning, such as no C P. The reason Johnson Heights was first up was the development interest in the area. And instead of going ahead with a large development without having a community conversation around it, the decision was made early on to move forward with that neighborhood plan. And the goal will be that that will help align with the OCP at the time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls, and thank you, Kelly. OCPs are difficult, they're difficult things. There, there's always, yeah, because trying to get consensus from 10,000 people, pretty tricky. So yeah, thanks for the update. And of course, I'm new on the, this process or coming in, so I'm supportive of us getting through. On the timelines, are we optimistic that we're going to be meeting, meeting the timelines that were outlined in the report today? Quite, quite, quite often, the OCPs will have these little, you know, bursts of whatever. And then, you know, it confounds things and gets stretched out. But what, from what you're seeing at this point, what's your confidence level on the timelines?
I'm actually quite confident. It's so far with the engagement of the focus group and having a plan and a schedule laid out. We have a clear set of directions and tasks to work through. There, you know, I could see potentially, I'm trying to think of any, any other major health pandemics that could potentially affect us. But given the timeline, we have a number of months set aside for the actual policy review. I've been involved at a number of community plan updates, regional plan updates. And many of those were done in under a year. So this compares quite well to that.
Right, through the chair, yeah, thank you. And I think the timelines are generous, but also realistic. I think that's the thing that I think quite often communities have unrealistic expectations on OCPs. The, you mentioned the high impact, high engagement. And just your sense of where Rebelstoke is, I think when the survey went out, it took a little bit more coaxing to get a bit more information. So it was kind of indicative of maybe a little bit less engagement. So can you just sort of give a sense from your experience of where we're at on impact and engagement?
So do you mean in terms of impact of the, of the OCP project itself or the subject matter within the OCP? Just to clarify that, counsel.
Yeah, so the subject matter, so do you perceive this as a high or medium, low impact? And do you perceive the community perceiving it as a high, low, medium impact?
That's a great distinction. As I, from what we've heard from the community in the visioning process, growth management is the top hot button for the community. So the conversation around growth is going to be very important and how, how the community, you know, really comes together to address that. So I think growth management and things related to that will definitely be key. And they consider it high impact. The other piece is, I guess, evolving from a resource town into an amenity community. That's a big transition for communities. And it's, it's a big challenge in terms of those long-term residents and those that have recently moved there for the lifestyle and, and access to nature and things like that. So there's a few tensions in the community, but it doesn't mean that they can't be resolved or even understood from the different perspectives. And that's part of the engagement process is to ensure those conversations happen.
Through the chair, you said a key word there I don't think I've heard before, but transition from a resource community to an amenity community as opposed to a tourist resort community, that's quite often you hear that out. So that just caught my attention. I'll just store that for a moment. On the focus group, can you, can you just quickly explain how the focus group was selected? Just for my understanding.
Yes, absolutely. So when we did the vision check-in process, we went out, our second round of engagement on that process, once we went to the broader community, was to kind of narrow down the results and refine the results. And part of the question to the community organizations and the council committee representatives, they were asked, who would you recommend to be on that committee? And we outlined that we wanted to make sure there's a diversity of perspectives that sat on that group. And so a whole list of names or organizations came back. And that's, that's how the group was formulated. And then when we met with the, those focus group members that were invited to the table, they suggested anyone that may be missing from that group. So that's how that's come about.
And then through Mayor Souls, my last question, other than that transition to amenity community, I'll leave that to you, whether you want to explain that or not. But the question I have is, so we're talking about the community engagement and one of the things that I hear. so we're talking about the community engagement, and one of the things that I hear a reasonable amount is for those that are not on social media, aren't engaged in, in, in that sphere, and including many people that just simply are not interested in being engaged at that level, particularly challenging now with COVID days. But can you just, how, how that component's being addressed, or if there's anything that, that council can do as far as those voices that are just absolutely not going to, going to be engaged on social media?
Yeah, and thank you so much for that question, because that's really something the focus group has kept bringing back again and again, is we have to make sure that we are engaging those that are harder to reach, not the typical, you can call them suspects, or, you know, those that, that are, you know, easily engaged and aware through social media and other channels. In the past, we've worked with folks like Lucy from the, the library to help get the word out and help directly engage with some of the users of the library and different folks there. Some of the members on the focus group do work within the social sector, and they have had some great ideas on how we can engage with those folks in the community to make sure that their voices come forward as well. So we've got a variety of different tactics that we're working on. We know not everyone wants to be on Zoom or social media, so we're trying our best to find different ways, given COVID protocols, in ways, and we will be adjusting as we go, and as things get lifted a little bit more, you'll see us out and about the community. We'll be at the markets, you know, just promoting the project itself when we have a chance, when we have subjects to engage on, those types of things. Community or backyard barbecues with small groups, is that, that's allowed, things like that.
Great, thank, thank you very much.
Charlie, you have a final question?
Sorry, Gary. Yes. I'm just curious, when, when the OCP is developed for a time horizon, to be a valid document for a certain time into the future, how, the focus group, how further ahead are they looking? Or is that put on the table?
So we're looking out 20 years to 2041 to match the population projections.
Okay, and what about discussion on the way we live, transportation, all those sort of changing elements that are coming in pretty rapidly? Are those elements being discussed?
Yes, absolutely. So there's master planning processes in place, and we're collaborating closely with those teams to make sure that we're creating efficiencies in the process and we're not duplicating engagement. And also that we are aligning and understanding what the outcomes of those master plan processes are. And part of the discussion in the focus group is going to be around the different realms of the OCP. So what are the important topics from a growth management perspective, from a community perspective? What are some of the best practices that we need to consider from other communities, other regions? And what will work for Revelstoke? And that part gets written out during the third phase, which is the policy review and update phase in the fall.
So, and touching on Tim's question about the amenity community or amenity future, that, that's another term for lifestyle choice, is that right? People are moving here for lifestyle as, as?
Yeah, so, you know, given that people can work remotely now, they're questioning, why am I living in a city when I don't want to? I want to be next to the ski hill, or I want to be able to go up a mountain bike, you know, for my lunch hour. A lot, it's called the Gateway and Natural Amenity Initiative. It's out of the University of Utah, I believe, or Idaho. And they've been doing tons of research, so we're keeping a close eye on that to bring forward some of the data findings that they have, just to help inform our conversations in Revelstoke. Because it is a very similar situation, Revelstoke, to a lot of the other mountain communities and what they're experiencing right now.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that, that's, that's great that they're considering that, because I, you know, I, my take on the, on the forestry and the rail, I mean, they're, they're wonderful and, and stable elements to our community, but they're not our future. So, I mean, they're not our, our growth future.
Good, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any last comments, Kelly, before I go to Ms. Wade? Okay, Ms. Wade? Sorry, I'm cutting in and out here. Any last comments before we move on?
Just through your worship, it would be helpful if the committee could pass a resolution about supporting this process.
So council, are you prepared to put a resolution on the table in supporting the, the OCP and the engagement process as we move forward? So that's what you're looking for, is that correct? Okay, Counselor Charlette, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Any, any discussion on that, that we've, we've done the presentation and we've asked some questions? Saying nothing further, I'll ask the question. All those in, oh, Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, so just a question. So I don't, I don't think the resolution was embedded in the report. But that's, we're making a recommendation to council, regular council meeting, likely to come next council meeting, is that correct? This would be going there for discussion?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so that recommendation or resolution to support, I was just about to ask a question, then that will go to council for further discussion. All those in favor?
I'm in favor, but I can't turn my camera on.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ryan. So that's unanimous. Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for the reminder, Ms. Wade. We're going to move on now to community economic development, Recovery Task Force, Taha and Ingrid, you're going to do a bit of a presentation, and I'm going to hear you, but you're going to see me go off screen in search of a water fountain. It's like a sauna in my office.
Thank you, through your worship. Before I welcome Taha to make a presentation to you, I just want to reiterate that we've been keeping you up to date as best as we can with regards to our, our recovery. If you called, we came forward with a presentation on February 23rd, I believe it was, focused on our economic recovery, the, the big issues we were working on, the, the short-term strategies and our long-term hopes for resiliency. We came back on March 11th with an update on economic recovery initiatives, including short-term fixes like working with Development Services to get our permitting and patios open. And as promised, we're returning now with a look through the lens of, of social recovery and resilience in the long term. A lot of those issues cross over. They can't be separated, social, economic, but we have tried to just build on the results of our wellness survey and tell you what some of the initiatives are working on. So I'll let Taha Attia, our new community development coordinator, take it from here.
Thanks, Ingrid, and hello to Mayor, when he gets back, and to council. Our, the presentation today will, will be focused on the, the social sector recovery in respect to the pandemic. It's focused on, it's not to the exclusion of the broader social sector, and the issues and challenges we know make up a, a really healthy social sector, but it's kind of reflective of the conversations that we've been having at the Recovery Task Force. I think Jalen's got control of it. Can we scroll down to the second slide a bit? Okay, so just the background, the, in, in May 2020, City Council supported the Recovery Task Force establishment in collaboration with the CSRD. Some of the big issues we're working on now, one of them is getting some research and data collection of, of local trends and, and in terms of our recovery. The community wellness survey was concluded, and a lot of the summary statistics have probably been, been presented to council before, but we are now looking to share those and inform the community at large of those results, and then look further into tracking local indicators. Those local indicators and, and statistics that, like, like population that we discussed, they are, it's really important to have those to be able to tease out what is going on, on the local level, and then to make requests in line with that. The second one is to support core funding. There's a lot of, a lot of service levels in, in the community that have really climbed up and up during the, during the pandemic period and continue to stay at that level. And while, while there was a lot of COVID support funding that came out in the, in the first and second waves, as, as we see it now, there's not an expectation for a lot of additional funding. So we're just looking at the, looking to be really responsive to the needs of the social sector. The next issue is to support recovery and resilience. There's a lot of questions still to be answered about what we, what we see in the community, how we can manage the safety of, of residents and how to maintain well-being in terms of mental health and, and feeling safe in our community. The community well-being survey has been talked about at, at Committee of the Whole, and the, the final report is upcoming. The summary statistics that you see on the right are really, really important indicators of what, what the community went through and, and creating an understanding in the community of a shared understanding of, of that impact of COVID is, is a really, it's a priority of the upcoming media campaign that's going to be shared in the review and online. And especially because there was a really high particip- participation rate. We, we found that a lot of the statistics that we came across were actually then echoed in either provincial or national level statistics later down the road, but this is a really good example of how local, local data collection can make our decision-making stronger. Getting a little bit more into the specifics and of, of those results, there are a lot of numbers on this, so I won't, I won't delve into them, granted the amount of information council and, and has been presented with today. But a, a lot of the big picture changes are actually to those, those younger respondents. The, the financial hardship in younger demographics was, was some, was really well-observed, and if you think back to the population presentation that we got, that, that's also where the bulge of the, the majority of population actually resides. And in terms of housing, more, more of what we know, I think it's, it's some more reinforcement of, of those trends. When we look to employment, that's also where the impact can be observed with younger populations. We see a lot of that has recovered, but we, we know that going into the, the upcoming uncertainty, this can help us understand what the effects of employment can be on, on younger populations without having to do another study immediately. And in terms of well-being, the mental health impacts can't be really understated. One of the, one of the measures that was used is, is called the ORS, and it's, it really reflected that an average well-being level for, for individuals in Revelstoke started to approach the average level of, that would indicate someone might be seeking counseling in, in another situation. So we know that the impact is not, is, is significant through, through an, an indicator like that. Communication of the results is really, is upcoming, and, and we hope it can support really an attempt for the community to, to come together around the impacts of the pandemic and understand a little, in a bit more nuanced of a way, how, how we can build resilience even following, following the, the challenges that we've been through. Service providers were also, were also surveyed in a bit earlier in the, in July to September, and we saw a real priority for them to shift to online with programming, which was well-received. A new sense of importance placed on working collaboratively, which we see in really sustained participation in collaborative meetings and, and idea sharing. Definitely favor opportunities to, to increase technology uptake. As we can see with even the engagement process we spoke about, we heard about earlier, technology uptake can really support the whole community to be a participant in those sorts of, even in, in an OCP effort or, or broader engagement. And I've, I've been to council a couple of times now about grant opportunities, but really leveraging those to help the social sector be sustainable is, is the goal at this point. At the Social Development Committee, we're, we're really glad to be linked with the OCP process and with council. We're really welcoming requests for input on, on any upcoming issues and, and looking to really go beyond that communication to work collaboratively across the wide variety of, of of sectors that are, that are represented there. We're also discussing social indicators from across the community, how to collect those and how to communicate those in ways that can support what service providers are seeing on the ground. And finally, communicating through the website, Revelstoke Life website. We've seen that actually be really successful in sharing information about counseling resources, where, which were a really highly-ranked page during the, during the pandemic and during lockdowns, and then more recently with vaccination information, which was well-visited. If there was one, one real slide to focus on during this, this presentation, it would, it would be this. These are a few of the key indicators that, that show the impact of the pandemic that haven't, haven't quite, they haven't been resolved. So in terms of food security, the, the lines at the food bank, it's, it's hard to focus on the numbers, the raw numbers, because there's a lot of different ways to explain them, but the, just the, the scale of increase being two to three times is really important. The, the food bank and, and Community Connections food programs have responded with a ton of innovation and, and been able to support the community, but that scenario I would point to is be, as one of those to monitor in the long term and, and as a, an indicator of the health of our community. Childcare also as an indicator of the health of our community and, and of importance to a younger but, but aging population. Referral rates have, have been climbing and can indicate a, a number of different things. But the, the shortages are, and the gap between the spaces and the demand is growing. The mental health and the need for counseling access also sticks out as, as having a lot of increased demand, which we hope will subside with the ending of the, with, with, you know, the, the impacts of COVID being less felt, but they, they still continue to be pursued. And I'll, I'll leave population aside because we did talk about that plenty today. So CD is working across these sectors to look for indicators. There have been some proposed, and, and we're working through different areas that we can track and how to reflect them in real time, and they won't all necessarily be used as a, as a final say on, on any of the, the issues at hand, but they're a benchmark of recovery is the way I would think of them. One of them that I would put on, that I, I put on here, the advertised rental rate, that's hard to, to establish, and there's lots of, lots of issues with, with collecting that, but pursuing something, some, some way of understanding the cost of living through the, the rental rate is something we're interested in. We're, we're, this slide was made previous to the announcement of all the vaccination updates, so I, I won't speak to it too much, but it is really encouraging to see the uptake of vaccination in the community. And we're now looking to support the uptake of vaccination with anyone who might be isolated and might not be able to reach that. and might not be able to reach that, that vaccination site, as well as communicating more broadly what, what kind of information we can, we can, we can to encourage people. In the short term, we still are, are dealing with health and wellness of the community, the, the mental health toll and the importance of vaccination. The healthy and safe work opportunities through the recovery are going to encourage, are really going to encourage, you know, return to work and, and openings and being able to strengthen the communication link between businesses and healthcare providers and, and with the, with the latest information. Also, the, the amount of summer visitation is going to be dependent on, on our ability to ensure that. And in terms of long-term resilience, this quote is really kind of reflecting the long-term, you know, reality that this, this pandemic won't have a definitive end. And the sooner that we can recognize that, the, the more on our way to resilience will be the, and then, you know, creating that community-wide understanding and then working with the OCP or other processes just to bring people together in healthy and safe ways and build the sense of community again. So this is just a summary of the Recovery Task Force and, and objectives. And it's, it's been a really important table for bringing together just a wide, wide diversity of stakeholders and, and put a different lens on social recovery for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Taha. It's, it's amazing, the information that you bring forward and what the Recovery Task Force is doing for the community is, is really much appreciated and, and I'm grateful for that. When we talk about the slide that you'd mentioned was most important, we talk about food and the ability to have food. And for, for those who don't have, nothing else matters. And, you know, I just, I look at that and to see the people lined up and their, our community is so, so strong in supporting that food bank and making sure that everyone in the community can eat is something that we can be proud of and yet sad about because we actually have to have a food bank to allow people to survive. Finances are always a huge issue, both for, for those in the business community and everyone else. And I'll get to you in a moment, Councilor Charlotte. Thank you, I noticed your hand up. Childcare, of course, talking with friends who are in childcare and, and those in my family who have to subscribe, subscribe to childcare, it's an extreme expense. And, and we realize that mental health for, for the community, mental health is important, but it seemed to be kind of shied, don't bring it up about until the pandemic hit. And so now everybody's affected with mental health in my business because things will never be the same as far as funeral service goes. My concern will be for the mental health of those immediately having to be served and not being able to have what they want. But then 10 and 20 years down the road, when they start to relive and realize that they didn't get to do what they wanted to do, it will impact again. So mental health will be going on for many years. Anyway, thank you for your comments and for your report, Councilor Charlotte.
Yeah, thank, this is the heavy stuff, right? But that's what we're here for. So yeah, I think I'll echo that, thank you very much. I am really curious about the metrics that are available for tracking rent and what is the current rent, rental rates in our community. I think it's moving very quickly, as is in many other communities where rents are skyrocketing. And I think if we did have a way of measuring that in some way, even if it's with a grain of salt, I think that metric, especially for the business community, looking at the cost of a thing, that living wage, what is the implication? How many hours do you need to work at the average hospitality wage in order to afford an apartment? That's one of those metrics where we can watch as it gets more and more unaffordable or if we can turn that around and start making it more affordable for our staff to be able to live here. I know my name, there, it looks like we're getting a new neighbor here where I live right now and the rent has gone up $200 in less than a year. From when we moved in last year in June and to when they're moving in now. And that's probably on the low side of what I'm seeing around the community. So I know it's definitely on my radar, something I'm really concerned about because we can't sustain this. And again, I know we're not the only community in this. So if we can leverage our networks to be talking with other communities, how do we measure this? How do we track this? How do we start making some kind of impact on it? I'd seen one article about a rent bank where it was community-led, I think it was at a Port Moody, where there was community-led initiative to help with emergency loans to help pay rent if something happened. Obviously not a long-term solution, but it's interest-free loans to help you make rent that month is basically the idea behind it. Because I'm curious as to what are the possibilities here, especially as the front, I talked to a few frontline staff workers that work in hospitality, where when you do get that diagnosis or you have to isolate, it was a real big challenge for a lot of people. And if your landlord's not cooperating, if your roommates aren't cooperating or don't want you in the home, where do you go? And I keep pushing everyone to go to Community Connections for help. I keep forgetting about the Revelstoke Life website, so I'll make sure I pull that out of my pocket more often, just to direct people there for the supports here in the community. But, yeah, Puzzles, thank you for being on it.
So Ryan, you had your hand up. Do you wish to say something or ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, I was curious about, I know at one point the federal government and the provincial government were helping out with some, some of these organizations and the extra, in the extra demand that they've seen. Have you had any discussions with them and, and are they expecting that funding to continue? What does that look like?
That's what, that's one of the areas of concern right now is that a lot of the funding models have moved back to pre-pandemic, but a lot of the demand in certain areas especially has, has not went down and some of the, and some areas have also seen, you know, increased costs for operations somewhere like childcare where the number of, the number of children who can be cared for in one, in one resource has been brought down. So the margins have changed in, in terms of what care can be provided. So, so yeah, there, there are definitely areas of concern around those core funding concerns going forward. And that's, that's part of the importance of tracking and, and keeping tabs on it.
Okay, I, I have another question if it's okay, Mayor Solz. I was wondering, yeah, so as a, and I'm not sure who the best person would be, but like as a council and as a city, like what are our options for addressing these concerns if we wanted to choose, you know, and, and support some of that recovery? Obviously we have the Recovery Task Force doing great work and, you know, we are like putting things in, systems in place and measuring the, the, those indicators that are showing us the wealth of the community, but like what, what could be done? And, and you know, something like that funding that came from the federal government, like is that money that could be used for something like this? And what's councils kind of take on that?
Any comment, Ingrid?
I think, you know, doing what we can to respond to help build capacity in that sector where they're flat out busy. And so, you know, we can work with them to respond to some of the funding opportunities like Taha has brought forward to you for emergency shelters and for ongoing supports. So just being, helping to pull people together, given the metrics and data they'd need to, to provide a strong case towards their funders that, that more help is needed and that this is a concern or an issue that's not going away, helping them with the grant applications. I mean, these are all the things we can do within our capacity within the department in terms of actual dollars spent, which I think is what you're, you're asking. There's different approaches we could use. If, if you're interested in having us provide some recommendations, you know, we would work with the Social Development Committee to maybe identify where there was some key interventions that council could support. I'm not sure that answers your question.
No, yeah, that, that's helpful. I'm just curious, just to hear some input from other counselors to like, if I'm understanding it correctly, it sounds like there are still some funding streams, but a lot of them are kind of drying up and we sort of have to take on this recovery more as like a Revelstoke specific solution? And, and is there interest from other members of council to look like, look at what that could look like?
So at this point, I'd had a conversation with the chamber yesterday and their concern is for the people that are falling through the cracks that do not qualify for funding. And so we're asking those people and, and through the chamber, we need to know who those people are so that they can get some sort of assistance in some manner as well. So it's not just the people that we know need assistance, but those who are, are falling through the cracks and that's kind of the focus at this point. So Counselor Ryan, your question will be kind of a, kind of a community-wide question. Who needs help and how can we as a, as a group, both council, the chamber and, and, and our business partners as to how we can assist and what can we do for that?
But it, but it, yeah, I completely agree and I think that that sounds wonderful. And I think those people who are falling through the cracks are probably most easily identified by the organizations in the social sector. So it'd be great to hear what they have to say about where the highest like kind of priorities are. But yeah, if our, our other counselors like, is that a priority for, for you guys?
Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Solz. Yeah, I'll give a perspective, the, you know, in response to Counselor Ryan, the, you know, one, one of the things, so the report, and thank you, Taha, for the report and the information was well-done and a lot of information there. One of the things I note is that we're, it's really around lagging, lagging information. So this is information, this is the status that we are today. Things have happened. It's, it's seems it is dire, especially for certain individuals. And so that's where we are today and what, what can we do? It's just our heart strength is go out and we have this amazing community that will, will come and, and provide support. I think from, from my perspective as a counselor, the most important thing that, that we can do is be really thinking about how we spend money, how we do, think about taxation, where are we getting the best value? Because the, the easy, the easy answer that everybody's doing, the federal government, the provincial government, federal government especially, is hand, hand out money, hand out money. And we're currently today, the amount of printing that Canada has done is the, the escalation, I think is almost the MO right now is like five times what it was a year ago. And so there's, this mass influx of cash and there's contradictions that, that come with that. But one of the things that the economists are talking about is the, is coming inflation. So these are possibly leading indicators of where we're going in the future. And, and as things like taxation, why, one of the reasons I was so, you know, fairly vocal on taxation issues, it's, you know, the 1% seems really tiny, but the cumulative effects of that kind of thing and the impact on the viability of businesses, the viability of people to, to be in homes when there's the excessive taxation or taxation that's going high. And so I think it's really important for us to really look at that because it's easy to say, you know, hire more people to, to deal with the, you know, people that are in, in difficult situations, but it has this cumulative effect. The, the other thing that I note is, is the employment contradiction. So there's this, you know, there's people that don't have employment, yet we have a, the business community is having difficulty getting employees. And so there's this contradiction and I think maybe that's something that we need to look at a little bit more. You know, there's some people that are saying, well, that's, you know, there's free money coming out, so people aren't motivated to work and stuff, but I think that's very shallow thinking. But that's really, I guess from my perspective as a counselor, how are we prudent in managing the overall resources and then really counting on the social service sector because they're way better at that? If we start just handing out more funds, duplicating provincial and federal jurisdiction, then we have to raise taxes and that makes the community less affordable. I, I think Counselor Ryan has some comments there.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with, you know, the implications of long-term tax raises, but I think under these circumstances, they're, they're obviously not normal circumstances. And what we're, what is being kind of presented to us is like not, these aren't necessarily indicators that are showing the results on people who are able to pay property taxes, you know what I mean? Like for, for sure, there is some overlap and I don't want to discount people who are on, you know, fixed incomes and things like that. But it, for the most part, what I'm hearing, you know, when you think about these, these different sector, you know, specific issues, that to me is like more of a Revelstoke specific issue that is not necessarily going to impact the taxpayers as much. Like they're the, the people who are being most impacted by COVID, you know?
Right. All right, any further comments, Counselor Palmer? You've got your hand up again?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, so just one of the biggest, bigger areas, there is a direct impact and that's on the business taxation. The Chamber of Commerce was very clear during the campaign period, looking for positions of 0% tax increase in 2022. They specifically were asking that and they were citing their, their statistics of their business viability. So that taxation, a 1% can possibly collapse a business and then you have more employees out of, out of works. But just, I, and I'm not wanting to dismiss the compassionate side. Again, we have wonderful people in the community and I think we need to be very sensitive to that. The, you know, the other thing like even on housing, the housing thing, so we have more social housing coming on stack, on, on, into, into the stock and that's good. How we as council create opportunities for the private sector for creating more affordable housing. So the four-plex that recently is, is a good example of where we need to really encourage that so that, and because when we look at like Columbia Gardens, the province bought essentially a private sector housing and it's been taken out of the, the market for two years now. And it will fulfill a need, but it also created a need as well at the same time. So how we find those other tools for affordability, I think are really important at the, sort of macroeconomic level. Thanks, Mayor Solz.
Thank you, Counselor Palmer. Any further comments with the report that Taha has put forward, Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Palmer, Palmer there on that last call, I was creating an environment for, for economic success and supporting our businesses i- is a big driver for, for employment and tax revenue and all that sort of stuff. So the, the environment and the support that we can provide, maybe we can look at some of, some of the things that the city charges as one option that addresses, addresses that. But that's just another, but the, the, the questions I have are, the data that, that was presented, it, does it, this is prior to the recent shutdowns that we've incurred, right? This was done for December, not, not the recent restaurants that have been affected by the COVID and likely to be extended further. So there's going to be some dramatic new impact from this COVID experience we're on that's going to be becoming more evident in the next little while.
Any comment, Taha or Ingrid regarding that?
No, I'd, I'd certainly agree that this, this was collected prior. It was during that period where we had had, you know, a, a busier summer and, and quite a few loosening of restrictions, but going into the winter when there were more worries emerging. So it did reflect that kind of post-summer period. And yeah, hopefully the impacts are not going to be as prolonged if, if we do have a shortened period this, this coming spring, summer, but we can anticipate it being recreated to some extent.
And I, and I think that, that the mental stress that people are under is, is just that it's continuing to go on. I just, okay, the, the, the recent shutdown was to April 19th. Now it's going to go to the May long weekend, you know, it's just a progression of obstacles. You know, it's just a progression of obstacles to overcome. So yeah, so the mental stress is, is just mounting.
I would just add, I would just add to Taha's comments that I think a couple of things will, will, you know, will show, you know, how things may change over the short term. The vaccination rollout is huge. The fact that everybody in the community over 18 can be vaccinated is going to have a big, big impact on people's level of confidence in being out regathering with people when they can, when it's safe to do so, visitors coming to town, restoring some of that economic activity. And then let's not forget, we did this survey in November. And now we're looking at longer days and easier to spend time outside. And so I think there's a lot of factors not to diminish at all, you know, that what we're seeing with the mental health issues that are, that are are systemic in many ways. But I think, I think the vaccination rollout for the community was a huge, huge impact. We'll have an impact.
Hopefully, yeah, but the, the real story there is that we're still have to live to the provincial standards, right? Even though we're, we're in our own bubble, we get the immunization thing applied to our community, we're still held to the same standard as, as the, as the province.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So, so there's no, you know, whether our community is fully immunized or not, it doesn't really matter. It's just the province is going through the same experience.
Well, that's because I'm actually going to answer that if you don't mind, Counselor Elliott, because I'm in communication with Interior Health and Dr. Henry on a weekly basis. And then actually with Interior Health, it's been daily. There's been several of us who have been working actually around the clock to actually get people who've fallen off the, fallen off the chart to make sure that they, they actually get immunized. However, the issue is once we're immunized, it takes two weeks for us to be at 80%. So we're now looking even mid-May before we're at that. And that's kind of if they're extending things, we're at that point. However, having said that, because people are continuing to move around, we're continuing to be inundated with people coming in and we're continuing to be high numbers. So those are, are concerns for us in the community, but it's concerns for everybody in every community here in, in British Columbia. Because now the variant is so much easier to transmit. And so the ramifications, both with getting the vaccine and having, and having herd immunity, there's going to be a time factor. And so can we get from here, April 15th to the beginning of July, mid-July and see is there going to make a difference? I don't know. It's going to change every week, every two weeks and, and it's really.
Gary, I think you just pegged, pegged why the mental health is issue. We don't know what, what to count on, right? You said, so if it's changing, that's adding stress, it's constantly adding stress. We don't know what to believe.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then I, I'm just curious about the childcare waitlist. If, if that's a problem, I mean, if, if the employment is we've got diminished employment, why is childcare going up? It does make, it doesn't correspond, I would think it'd be the other way.
I can, so I won't speak for the childcare directly, the providers directly, but it is a pretty complicated picture of growing that, growing space, like creating childcare spaces is a process that they work really, really diligently at and they're able to open childcare spaces as, as they get approved and as there are trained workers in that area. And hopefully there are going to be changes coming down the pipeline that will boost their wages and further increase those spaces. But it's a really complicated picture of, of growing those that is one part economic and affordability and another part just the increased demand.
And I would add that there is also an issue of not enough childcare providers, a huge shortage. So working with Okanagan College and other health, you know, providers to find a way to attract more people to that and get them trained because there's a, a big skills gap.
Yeah. And I think if there's one way to support that for our city is that we could probably waive license fees for childcare facilities or we could offer some bonus thing. I, I don't know, but, but it seems like an obvious way we can contribute to the childcare facilities and alleviate some of this, this is a concrete action we can, we can take. That's on a more local scale.
Just to comment towards that, I, I think those are the types of questions that would be, we would be great to, to refer to the committee and have and come back with more, more kind of fulsome recommendations than an update. So that I'm not speaking for others. But, but yeah, I think, I think they're, they're, they're always exploring and hoping for requests like that or hoping for opportunities to, to make requests.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think as, as I'll speaking for my, my, you know, I think most of the councils would be willing to, if you come up with some recommendations, we'd listen to them and likely act pretty quickly. But for us to create them is, is a bit, we don't know what the needs are.
Absolutely. I think one of the, one of the bigger picture ones that we've made reference to just now in terms of vaccination is that having that local data when it came to the actual rates of, of local COVID and then bringing those very, very loudly like, like Mayor Solz did to the province can create action on, on, on key priorities like the ones we're seeing.
Counselor Ryan, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I was just gonna echo what Rob said, which is that I would love to hear like concrete, like recommendations and wondering if we need to make a motion for that or yeah, or if that's just something we can have.
Ms. Braun?
I think that, as Taha said, the Social Development Committee is, is eager to, to hear from council in terms of taking a closer look at where there are needs that council could perhaps help meet. So I think that, you know, it's up to us maybe to work with our chair to develop an agenda for the next meeting to share some of your, your thoughts and concerns with them.
Okay. So you're willing to bring that forward? We don't need to do a resolution? You can just
I don't believe so.
Move that forward. All right. Good. Counselor Palmer, you had your hand up briefly? Nope. Okay. Any further comments for Taha on this report? Seeing none. Thank you, Taha. I appreciate. Oh, Counselor Elliott?
Just on the food bank, how is the Community Connections doing? Are, are they maintaining supply or what's happening there?
From what I, from what I've heard, they're, they're running off their feet. They're very busy, but they are, they're managing and they're, and they're always looking for more funding opportunities to, to be able to maintain the longevity and the sustainability. So yeah, so I, I think they're operating with, with the hope of getting more funding and, and being as opportunistic as they can with the opportunities they get.
Do you, sorry, Taha, I've just got a lot of questions, but
Sure, yeah.
Just with the, I, I've seen the lineup at the food bank quite often there and I know the users of the, of the facility have increased over, over the previous years. But with the season, ski season ending, do they, has there been a decline in the numbers using the facility?
To my knowledge, no. To my knowledge, there's been quite a maintained level of use. I, I could, I can forward the, the numbers that I have done research on since putting this slideshow together to you.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see whether at the end of next month, whether the decline in traffic here has been matched by decline in the demand at the food bank.
We can, we can probably get, ask Community Connections for either for a report or to come and do a presentation and they should be able to fill us in a little better, I think.
And I think that they have a role on the Social Development Committee and as part of our reporting, you know, around the table with, with those members, we can capture that information in the minutes of the Social Development Committee and get them out to council and draft mode, you know, within 48 hours of the meeting.
Awesome. Great. Thank you for that. Okay. Wow. Thanks again, Taha. Appreciate your time. I'd like to move on. Into Communications, 12 A, Bylaw Enforcement Quarterly Report. So Ms. Floyd has that report here. Any comments or questions regarding that? That report? I think, you know, I see, I see the bylaw enforcement people out in force doing, doing their work and appreciate the reports that come to us and grateful for, for what they're doing. I have no comments on, on their reports or what they've done so far. I think you're going to see numbers go up as more people come into the community and continue to move about. All right. Saying no further comments, I'm going to ask to go in camera pursuant to section 90.1 A, C, E and I. And I would like motion, someone put that motion on the table for me, please. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Charlotte, all in favor? Opposed, motion?